Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take roll call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. And then roll call.
Yes, please.
Candace?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am here, and we have a call.
Thank you. We need to make one amendment to our agenda. Under item 12, we will be adding item letter B for the approval of board members to attend the Michigan School Board Association Conference. So I am looking for a motion for someone to approve the amended agenda. Some move?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Some move?
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Wamsley.
Okay, I'll start with personnel. Jamie, I think that one. Yep. We have two resignations. Ed Delore from the Skid Will Be freshman class advisor, and Brandon Day, who's our state wrestling head coach. There's one new hire, Stephanie Greffs, who's a little school lunchroom supervisor. There's several notice of appointments. Terry Askew, she was hired as a bus driver at the last meeting, she's now a lunchroom supervisor at 12. Karin Christensen is the academic Skid Will Be deputy advisor at the high school. Jamie Clausen went from specialized teacher to K-12 instructional coach and run and launch specialist. Hunter Hill is the esports advisor at Richmond High School. Mary Beth Musket took on another position as four-year-old lead preschool teacher in addition to her preschool aid position in the afternoon. Adriana Redman is the interact advisor at Richmond High School, and Ray Shannon is the art director at the high school. And then I received no concerns or corrections to the meeting minutes.
Any questions for the board?
Actually, Mr. Wamsley, can you explain to me what the interact position entails a little bit?
Interact is a subgroup of the Richmond or the Rotary International. It's a service agency. Oftentimes, it was referred to in the past as key club. Key club's part of the Quanah group, interact's part of the Rotary International.
It's just a scheduled lead?
It's a scheduled lead position. So a lot of times, outside organizations that will need volunteers, they'll start with the interact advisor, NHS advisor. Our kids will be volunteering many of those options.
So that's an all-three-school position, or just high school?
Interact is just at the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Ms. Clausen taking that position, that was because we were waiting for that because we got the specialized teacher to replace her, is that correct?
Oh, yes. So when we look at the scheduling, Ms. Clausen will actually be .5 TC at the middle school, .5 instructional codes. So she'll work with new teachers and specialized, and specialized staff, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. I don't know. Margaret, we'll start with you.
All right. I have three. First one is want to, on behalf of the Richmond Education Foundation, give a thank you to Cynthia Fields, Kathy Guinea, Sarah Ogden, Becky Borwick, Brian Wamsley, Trish Diaz, Paul Knight, Jennifer Morella, and Jamie Field. They worked the Red Barn at the Armada Fair, and for their time, a $500 donation, they chose to give it to the Richmond Education Foundation. So we're very excited about that, and thank you so much to them. Homecoming is this week, as everyone knows, and I wanted to give a shout-out to Connor, who got the float building happening, and a thank you to the parents who jumped right in to have floats built at their house. The ninth grade class, Steven Jill Van Denaville, 10th grade Adam and Carrie Rush, 11th grade Joel and Sarah Dobalier, and 12th grade Ryan and Annie Teltow. So thank you for those families for opening up their homes.
Thank you.
That's it? Yeah.
I thought you said three.
Huh?
You said three.
Connor. Oh.
And the parents.
Parents.
Got it. Okay. Sorry about that.
Sorry. I saw that as one. I'm doing my little check in here. Thank you.
Candace, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. So is that going to be a competition, or is it just fun?
Float building? Oh, it's competition.
For the coming up, okay.
Yes.
I have no idea who the judges are. That's run through the school, but they'll be judged, oh yeah, someone's going to win.
It's so exciting.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Very nice. Happy homecoming. Okay, so I have a shout-out to Ms. Morella and Mr. Knight. So far, the PTO over at the middle school has collaborated with both of them, and they have a great calendar set up for the year and great ideas. We have a whole new board this year, and we're really excited. And just everyone, watch out for the RMSPTO Facebook page. They changed over their page for some exciting stuff that's going on, and obviously, all the parental help throughout the year is needed whenever anyone wants to operate. Thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Kelly?
Nothing today.
Danielle?
Margaret.
Sandy?
I also do not have any today.
Angela?
I'm all set.
And I'm all set. Thank you, everyone. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our student board of education rep. Connor is at the float building, I believe. He has a ton of things going on this week, so Margaret is going to read his minutes.
He has a lot here, folks. So, at Lee School, we have filled 75 out of 80 GSRP seats. Marking will continue so that we can hopefully fill the final five as soon as possible. Childcare had a successful start to the year, and the students are having a lot of fun with the new furniture, games, and toys. The outdoor classroom is also a big hit. The staff has been taking students out to explore the new area daily. We are looking forward to utilizing the additional space for family events and educational opportunities. Our first assembly will be on Friday, September 29. We will be discussing respect, and two students from each room will be recognized for showing respect. Lee's trunk or treat is October 27. They are accepting candy donations in the front office. Instructional rounds have begun at Lee Elementary. This is where teachers have the opportunity to observe classrooms in the building to fill their tool belt with best practices. In the beginning of October, the fire safety presentation will be provided by the Richmond Fire Department. October 27 is pumpkin painting in the courtyard is for the Fall Social. It will be from 3:30 to 5:30, and we will be inviting all of our preschool families to join us for a fun-filled evening. Cider and donuts will be provided, along with a gift bag for all of our students. We will continue to promote early literacy, and students will all be receiving a book to take home. That's pretty cool. Middle school. Oh, this week, we hope to finish up all our NWEA testing, and most of our extracurricular clubs are up and running. On Monday, our girls volleyball team plays Almont at home at 4:30. On Tuesday, cross-country is away at Cross Lex. There is also a PTO meeting at 3 o'clock. On Wednesday, girls volleyball is home versus Yale at 4:30. On Thursday, our football team is away at North Branch. This week, the middle school will celebrate Richmond Community Schools' homecoming with Spirit Week. Monday is pajama day, Tuesday is hat day, Wednesday is neon color day, Thursday is under the sea day, Friday is blue and white day. We will also have a pep assembly in the morning at the football stadium, and we'll all be cheering on the mighty Blue Devils at Friday night's homecoming game. At the high school, Spirit Week is this week. Powder puff and the bonfire is on Wednesday, parade and football game on Friday. Students voted for homecoming king, queen in their court last week, and the winner will be announced at halftime at the game on Friday. Mini king and queen will also be voted on and announced during halftime. The Devils' den has opened today during third and fourth hour. Students are now able to purchase merchandise, as well as snacks and drinks during the school day, during passing time. NWEA testing began last week and will continue through the end of the month. We already did that one. Our student advocate, Ms. Redman, and the diversity club have been planning educational informative activities for our students next week to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. Manufacturing Day field trips are planned, and I believe that's like the first week in October, isn't it? Berg Tools, oh, they're going to Berg Tools on October 3, and the pond guy on October 5. Permission slips have been distributed, and up to 50 students will be able to attend. From the athletic department, football is now 4-1 after big wins against Yale, 42 to 21, and Imlay City, 35 to 3. They now have a tough stretch as we play North Branch for homecoming this week and Almont next week. Volleyball had another good week after a tough loss to Imlay City, 3 to 1. They came back over the weekend going 4-0 in Marlette on Saturday. Last week, they also dominated Armada, winning three sets to one. Soccer lost another tough match last week against Yale, 3 to 1. They have a night game tonight against North Branch. Our equestrian team won districts last week and are moving on to regionals. Cross-country had an invitational at Anchor Bay last week, and seven of our runners placed and earned medals. Our girls ended up finishing fourth overall. Girls golf had two matches at Heather Hills last week. They took eighth in the county championship and took fourth in their weekly V-WAC invitational. They will play at Castle Creek today in Imlay City. That's it.
I just have a question on Brian. The equestrian team, districts and regionals, where is that at? Where does that happen? I just wonder.
I don't know where they add the districts and regionals at. They did a lot of the good old.
Park.
Park. But I don't know where it was at. I can get to that and email the board.
Okay, just curious. That's it.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update, Mr. Wamsley.
One thing I'll just add is that audition for the Play Ball Play Play On by Rick Abencar today and Wednesday from 3:30 to 5:00. Legislative updates. Last Tuesday, the Senate Education Committee began hearings on Senate Bill 500, which was just introduced last week. This bill would actually require the Michigan Department of Education to operate and provide free breakfast and lunch to all students in public schools. They're actually putting this into the Michigan School Code, so it becomes a permanent structure into the budget. This would be the appropriation of about $160 million to this program. So Michigan would be only one of a few states that actually has free breakfast and free lunch for all students, structurally built into their rules and regs, if you will. Last Tuesday, the Senate Education Committee also approved House Bill 4752, which amends the Public School Employees Retirement Act to address the current requirement that all retirees must wait nine months after retiring before they're able to substitute without penalty to their pension. It would actually reduce it to a six-month waiting period. It would allow each retiree to earn up to $15,100 per calendar year. So if you retired in November, waited your 30 days or so forth, you could earn up to $15,100 in one calendar year, and then earn another $15,100 after that. After the six months is over, it would then no longer exist for your limit on what you could make.
Right. So it's after 30 days.
It's in that six-month period. If it falls within one calendar year, you could earn up to $15,100.
Because you only have to wait 30 days to be able to.
No, it's in that six-month period.
You gotta wait six months.
No, you could work in that six months. After the six months, there's no limit.
Yeah, okay.
The only person in as far as the public school employee that this does not affect, which is kind of unique because they've never named a position in the law before, is the superintendent. So, sorry, I thought I was retiring and couldn't come back. It goes before the full Senate, and it's expected to be approved.
So you couldn't come back or teach or something?
I could come back and do any other position, but that's the way the laws are.
So an interim superintendent?
Pardon?
What about an interim superintendent?
Any superintendent-type position.
When are they voting on it?
It's supposed to be done, actually, it's supposed to be this week. They're supposed to actually vote on it. Move forward with it. The intent of the legislature is to finish by the first week of November. They're going to adjourn their session early. Basically, by doing that, all bills, by leaving early, become effective immediately rather than having to wait. One of the bills that they propose is moving the Democratic primary to, I believe, February. And in order for that to take effect, they have to take immediate effect, so, among other things. But that's one of the bills. Also, last Tuesday, the House Education heard testimony from Representative Brenda Carter from Pontiac regarding House Bill 4241 and 4242, which would require each school district to have panic alarm systems in place and create appropriations to fund them. Basically, what we have on our badges, they're not looking to have every school district have that so that all employees have the ability to put schools into lockdown as well as notify.
And they're going to pay for it?
That's the, that is trying to create unappropriations funds to pay for.
So what about, okay, could we get the first?
That's what I was going, all right. I wasn't going to say it, but.
Normally, no. It's usually going forward, is the way they do it.
Well, I'd just like to say, still, great initiative on that, movement team, to know absolutely that coming. And we're already, did the same thing with the water. And with the law was saying we had to change out all of our water, because we're extremely ahead of the, yeah, ahead of the ball on that. I appreciate that.
And finally, I know I mentioned to you, you have in front of you the action item there for tonight. In it, as you are looking at it, you just have to confirm what you want to pay for because it has to be done at an open public meeting. So normally, for all employees, it's conference lodging, meals, mileage, all the four categories that we typically approve for. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Next item is our items of bid trust from the board. I'll start off with Candace this time.
Well, I was going to talk about the classes, but we're going to get to that later, so I think, I think I'm good. I guess I was just going to follow-up maybe on, were we going to have a follow-up workshop at some point? I know we had the workshop in the beginning of the year about.
We don't have anything scheduled right now at this point. So it could be something we, if we want to talk about or what that topic would be.
Okay.
But there's not been scheduled right now.
Maybe talk about things that could be addressed, you know, just, I know that we have our meeting in January.
Our organizational.
Organizational meeting for the positions for the board, but I would like to have a discussion ahead of time in talking about what those positions entail and what we may structurally want to change or put particular responsibilities on each of those roles, or just kind of just discuss it, because I think that there can be some things that we can talk about there.
And we can add that to our, either our November or December agenda.
Just, you know, because if we're going to nominate somebody to be a certain position, what that would entail, maybe they wouldn't want that position if some of those tasks may change as to what they are currently. I think there's.
So you want to look, you want to look at the tasks that are currently in our board policy, and you would like to make some recommendations for changes?
Correct. Or at least discuss how that may look differently, or.
Well, then, that's a policy conversation.
I was just going to say.
If you, if you have an interest that, looking at that policy, that if changes to it, whatever, and if the rest of the board is in agreement, then that's something you can put on the agenda. That's a policy change you're talking about, that you want to do.
To look at, okay.
So I mean, if that's, if that's what you want, then I.
I think she might be thinking back to when we all sat together at the workshop and kind of the board, roles and responsibilities. We talked about that and outlined exactly what roles and what we wanted our president or vice president or each person to do. And I mean, is that, is that still a policy, or would that be more of, we would like, you know, our president to be a voice in the media, or something like that, to where we all decided something like that?
That is in the policy.
Okay, so that would be policy. And then it should be done before, I suppose, we would do, I guess, elections.
Right. Because if you don't want to take that.
If the board, if the majority of the board wants to look at that policy.
We'll look at it.
To look at, then, you do have to put it on the agenda and have a discussion. But yet, that, that kind of conversation, what you're saying is if it comes to the organizational meeting and someone gets nominated, that that person's whether to say, no, you know, I don't want to do that, or yes, I will, that's when it happens. But the actual job responsibilities that are lined out in the policy, that, if that's what you want to talk about and you want to change, that needs to be done long before.
Right, that's where I'm coming in, yeah.
Okay, so as a board, do we want to do that? Do we want to go back and take a look at our board policy under our job duties and descriptions?
I think I'm okay with what's there, but I will. Me too. For you, I think we might maybe need to review and enforce, I guess.
Well, you could, I don't know.
Outline or maybe.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I don't know, not enforce, maybe it's not the word I want, but maybe, you know, or delegate, maybe if the role needs to be delegated to somebody else, or, you know. I think I'm, I don't know that I would. I would have, I mean, I remember we kind of like threw them, but I'd like to go through them again before I decide, like, before I said yes or no.
Okay, so let me ask. Come on, Margaret.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't see any need to change the policy part, I meant that. But it wouldn't be so bad to just print it out, email it to us, then everybody can see it and look at it, then you know what you're, what you're looking at.
It's all, it's all on the new web.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but it doesn't hurt to make copies that everybody, that doesn't hurt. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I agree. I have read it recently, and I, I don't know, it's a little vague. I mean, there could be some things, you know, that we could just find, too, and just kind of, I mean, as a board, we have a vision now, and we, you know, we each have responsibilities that we put upon ourselves, and kind of, I would expect that everyone would take everything just as serious, you know, coming to the board meetings.
Well, that's, that's a whole different.
Or not coming to the board meeting. I mean.
But that's a whole different conversation.
So the policy of, you know, reaching out to the board president and/or not, just not showing up to a meeting, or showing up but without, I mean, how many times over the year can you not show up? And it's kind of like, what's going on there? You're giving up your vote, and that's kind of.
Listen, I'm with you, but that's not, that's not really policy. That's a conversation, just like that, I think we had that great workshop in January.
Yeah, I thought it was great, too.
I thought it was great.
Yes.
To me, it's the same kind of conversation. We've now all had a whole year, those that are new, and we've all had a whole year. I reached out to Deb, I'd like to do a board self-evaluation. She said, asked me to look, so I was looking at some stuff. I think, I think you do that in January, along with another workshop, and that's where you have those kind of conversations of what are we.
You mean after we vote for the board?
Well, we aren't voting for the board. We're, we're all the board together.
I mean, I know, but the positions.
We'll vote on January, is what she's saying.
Correct.
So if we have that workshop afterwards, we'll already have been voted into a position.
I can see where that would be beneficial, to actually have the works, to have that information before the workshop. Because then everybody, if we are going to review it, if we are going to do anything, then everybody knows what their expectations are for this particular position or whatnot.
How about this suggestion? I can send it out, or I can copy it if you want to copy, or it is on the website. Take a look at responsibilities and duties, it's right in, I forget the number, I looked at it this afternoon. And then just send me a text or an email, just say, Deb, I would like to, or Deb, I don't, as far as to review it before we hit January.
But I, but I think we already kind of said that we're not really looking to do anything with the policy. I thought we were.
Are we sure?
Well, let's.
Okay, let's do it again.
I thought the conversation was leading towards having a workshop, talking what, how, how we do, we evaluate the superintendent, I believe we should evaluate ourselves. So, and if we want to do that in a November time, pick a date and do it and have a conversation, the direction that we're going, different, different things that have happened, that we've had conversations about, or maybe we haven't had conversations. If you do that, it might all, everything fall into place.
So we can have one, bring the change of our bylaws to that meeting, everybody do their research beforehand.
Because there's code of conduct, there's ethics, there's all of that stuff you could do.
So have that, instead of doing like our, because I thought we were kind of planning to do one in February again, like we did last year as a way to just, like you were just talking, Margaret, but we, I don't have a problem if you want to do it in November, and then that way. I think we should do a mini one in November that has only to do with the board's roles and responsibilities. And then we can, after, come January and February, we can get into a deeper dive, another workshop.
After the positions are filled and how they.
Right. Because I think that at least that info, our board policy bylaws, isn't that big. I mean, it's what ages them the most, right? So we could all go over that for a workshop.
And it's not a bad idea, after an organizational meeting in January sometime, to have, sit down, how do we want your to look exactly like we did in January? I thought it was really a good meeting. There's nothing wrong with doing that, no matter if everybody's been here 100 years, one year, three, it is.
And also, once you take a position, you know, maybe there's some things that you might want to change, and you might want to bounce off of your, everybody else, and things that you think could help or, you know.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we are going to have a workshop in November to go over anything or anything that has to do with our board membership, our job descriptions, our code of ethics.
From the organizational.
Board responsibilities, that whole section.
That whole section.
Talks about ethics.
Right.
Office.
And then we can talk at that time if there was any thoughts of change.
Educational things, too, that could be maybe implemented into the policy for each of us.
Such as, oh, requirements to take.
Right.
Certain topics that.
Do we need to take 101?
Maybe Angela's better at the finance, you know.
Well, we already said, we've already said everyone needs to take 101. Is everybody taking 101 today?
But it's not in our, I don't believe it's in our policy.
Well, I don't know that it has to be in policy when we all sit around and we say that.
But it should be.
But that's what I'm thinking. I feel like it should be there, then that way, there's no question. If you're going to be on the board, you need to take 101 at a minimum.
Correct.
Yes.
And then there could be even talk about officer, offices, should you have more than 101 once you get an office position?
There are some boards that do state that.
Do I know some of you with great experience, maybe, but I don't, but no, that wasn't what I. And they're not all. I understand that some of the classes, maybe, we already know.
Obviously, there are some boards do have that. You can't even be recommended for president or vice president unless you A, B, C, D, E. I mean, these are all things that we can really talk about.
Okay, everyone in agreement on that, though?
The only thing I would suggest is that we have just one meeting, regular meeting in November because of Thanksgiving, right?
Oh, Christmas, too, it's Christmas.
But one, we also have the date where we are doing Brian's evaluation, so just to be able to put a calendar email out to.
I'll work with Brian, we'll get some dates together, and I'll get it out, we'll get it out to all.
We can get it out sooner rather than.
Yeah. I agree, so we could put those dates aside.
Maybe we can like do two, we could do it off of one of the other special things we have, another evaluation. I don't know, that might be too long, but I think. Another evaluation, I don't know, that might be too long.
We'll take a look at it, we'll see what we can get together for dates.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions on that plot?
Are we going to be done doing the board self-evaluation before that date? On that date? Like, are we going to be doing that and speaking about that? Or are we going to be doing that at a later time? That's the first I...
Well, originally, when Margaret and I talked about doing it, we were going to do it in that February workshop that we were going to do as part of, in the eval at that time.
As part of starting the new year.
Yeah, starting the new year. That's originally where we talked about doing it.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Candace, anything else?
Nope, I think that was it.
Okay, Sandy?
I do have a couple things. I attended the Macomb County School Board Association Legislative Committee meeting for Candace. She had the PTO stuff. And it was really interesting, actually. I really honestly wouldn't mind going there on the regular. But I did get a couple of handouts, which Candace has this really nifty booklet here. It's everything, so I'm going to get it or put it in there, but if anybody wants it. Like, this is like basically a list of every single person in the legislature, like, or sent everywhere, like, everything you can think of in their context, which is kind of cool, I thought. So I'll put it in the folder and just ask Candace if you want a copy of that or whatever. And then we also did go over what Brian had already talked about in regards to, there's a lot of talk about that in regards to the teacher, retiring, being able to come back sooner. And I found it really interesting and really hoping that that does pass. I find it very interesting, like, that's literally the only profession that something like that exists.
Right.
Like, you can work anywhere else, retire and go back and it's fine. But a teacher, you have to wait this big long waiting period. And I think that that will help districts across Macomb County and even the state in regards to, you know, the shortages and things like that.
But it's every school, but such as teachers, anybody who's...
True, correct, right, yes. So anyways, like, we kind of, so I'm not going to reiterate all the stuff. You know, Brian really kind of did a great job at it. So, but that's pretty much really all we talked about when we were there. But I will give Candace the handouts that I did get to put in here and then just let her know if you guys have or want any copies of it or whatnot when she has this booklet.
Thank you so much, Sandy, for doing that.
Yeah, no, I actually enjoyed it, so I'm not even complaining. Secondly, I just wanted to reiterate, I saw a couple of things on social media where it was wrong information that was given out. And I just want to, I just want to just reiterate the booklet that we have here that actually goes through like the, you know, the chain of command of who to contact in regards to your questions. Also, I know right now we're kind of under a revamping our website, so we don't have the Ask Now or Just Ask on there. But I'm hoping that it gets up quickly and I encourage people to do that because then the correct person will be directed to answer your questions. So it will be correct information, up-to-date information. So hopefully we get that on there sooner rather than later. And that's it.
If I could just piggyback on that real quick. Because I did actually ask Deb if, because I know we kind of made a rule not to respond on Facebook posts. But I did ask her if it was for informational purposes like that, because I was doing this, I thought the same thing. I'll take a picture of the tri-fold as well as add the link for the Just Ask, but the Just Ask wasn't on. So I did ask her and she said that it was okay for educational purposes like that, that we could do that randomly if we feel like it needs to be shared. Here's the... And just in that response only, not say anything, just post that.
Yeah, I mean, you're involved in a lot of course, but I'm not, I'm going to refrain from that. And the reason why is because I don't want there to be like backlash at it and then there's the back and forth and I just don't think that that's appropriate, I guess. I would much rather just put the link on, like, I think that we should be able to just go ahead and share the link to the Just Ask so that they can, or direct them to a correct person that they should be asking a question to.
Yeah, I'm not engaging in banter back and forth at all anymore either because it does no good. But everyone should, yeah, have access to that knowledge, I guess. So that was the only thing I was thinking about responding with.
Yeah, so if you can just let us know, Brian, when that is back up and running so that we would be able to share that link, I guess, should we need a...
Angel?
Yes, I maybe should have shared this at our Blue Devil Raves maybe a little. But we did get an email today, I don't know if some of you were able to check it from Staples. It was an email regarding our assessment data and grade level performances. And I was very excited to see that there were four different areas that was above 60, at 60% or above proficiency, which I don't think I've seen since I've been researching that data in this district. And I appreciate you doing all that work and I want to thank all of our administrators, teachers, staff and everybody, of course, they've all been a part of that. And I'm just looking forward to seeing those numbers go up. And I guess I just wanted to thank you, Renee, for getting this out to us. It's great to see.
Kelly?
So I just had one thing that I wanted to bring up and it's not... So when you're standing by the gate to go into the football field, you've got handicapped, wheelchair, scooter people that can get up onto the sidewalk and then they have to go all the way down by the dumpster to get over. There's no ramp coming back down. And I kind of, I just noticed that the other day because people were looking like, how do I go? They can get up from the parking lot, but then they have to follow the sidewalk all the way around to the dumpster and then cut across to get to the ticket booth. There's not an up and a down right there, that's all. I know that's like, huh.
Are you talking the handicap parking by the new addition? Or the handicap parking in the main student lot?
In the main student lot. Just trying to visualize that. Yeah, I know even last year, I remember seeing a gentleman in a wheelchair and he kind of like got down the thing and got to the curb and went, hmm. And a couple of people just went over there and boosted him up. And I kind of forgot about it until this last home game when I watched him lean down a scooter, have to go all the way around and kind of looking like, where am I going? So I know that's not like an easy fix because that's a monetary thing and everything, but that's the only thing I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Margaret?
I just have one and I just realized sitting here that I didn't send the text to everyone, so after the meeting I will send it. But Kelly Mathis, our varsity cheer coach, came up to me at a football game and she had on this all-weather jacket thing. And she came up and thanked me for the board putting that money into athletics for, you know, how we did all our budget stuff. And this was what went in for cheer, this is what they purchased. So what she sent me was a picture of all of them so everybody could see the jackets. So I told her I would pass her thank you one to the board.
Austin?
Is that the money from the, that we just approved for it to go?
For uniforms?
For uniforms and stuff? Or someone has been doled out? Yes, yes.
So they had a choice, I'm not direct this to you, they had a choice on spending it. I don't know if I call a jacket a uniform.
Well, that particular, when they've never been able to add to the uniform because the code deals with multiple seasons, you don't have three different types of code. So that was one thing that was on their wish to part as part of their uniforms. And the coaches worked on that.
Thank you, I don't have any items. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, I received one email from the public. This email was from a parent regarding their concern about a required reading book. This email was forwarded to Mr. Longley to address. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Okay, we will proceed to our action items. I'm looking for the approval of dress code and locker room expectation subsections in the 2023-24 Student Parents Code of Conduct.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the dress code and locker room expectations subsections of the 2023-2024 Student Parents Code of Conduct Handbook as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
I'm going to go, because I heard her voice, yeah, I heard hers first. Is there any discussion?
Oh, I do. Brian, how are we, do we have an idea how we're going to let the children know that this is, of these changes since they've already signed their sheet for the year?
I will have each of the building principals send this out to their buildings so parents are getting it through email as well as the students.
I thought we were dividing these two items up, no?
They are, so there, you have a locker room expectations section.
I guess I was assuming under, I guess, to clarify, under different action items, but, okay. No, you're, yeah, they're separate.
You okay?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Looking for a approval or motion for the board members to attend the Michigan School Board Association Conference?
Can I just ask a quick question, Mr. Mishon, before we do? This might be way off, but it's in my head, the whole conflict, the monetary, whatever. If you're, we have two board members that this money is going towards. What happens if we're paying for the whole entire board to go? Is that, does that conflict part not come in? You know, when it's a monetary effect on a board, so you have to abstain?
Oh, so does Angela and Candace have to abstain.
But what if all of us were going? I'm just saying, yeah. But how do we vote if we're all going?
Right, that is what I'm saying. So how do we even vote on this period? If we were going to give money for all of us to take this, how do we approve it? And is there no conflict?
Is there in our policy about education?
There is. It says reimbursement, board members may be reimbursed for their actual unnecessary expenses incurred in the discharge. The board, by a majority vote of its members at an open meeting, approved reimbursement of the specific expense before the expense was incurred.
Yeah, I get all that. But I'm just saying, tonight we have two board members, so if we did, you know, they had to abstain. But if we were doing, the entire board was going to this conference, you can't do this. Or am I wrong? I'm just...
I don't, I don't, I don't believe it falls in there because you approve a budget and that budget had a line item in it for board.
Then why does it have to go down at all?
Because the policy, basically you're saying if Candace and Angela are going, you're authorizing reimbursements for these expenses and only these expenses only. And so as a public in an open meeting, it's not something that's done behind your policies. It has to be, the public has to know that you're reimbursing expenses. And last year when we, if it goes forward, you know, last year, we had the conversation here, it was all in open public, so there's no question on it. But we also didn't have a line item in the budget last year, so we put that in there when we rolled the budget over and it was proved there's a line item for board training or workshop or...
So to me though, the verbiage meaning reimbursement means that we would pay upfront and then you would reimburse. But in order for the district to be paid back through the state for the CBA courses, you would have to pay it and submit for reimbursement. So maybe we need to just change the verbiage.
Well, but it could be anything else. I mean, you could go to another workshop where it's not getting reimbursed through the state.
Well, the day class is not, it's just the CBA courses that are, so...
But you could go to anything, any class that offered and you would need to be reimbursed to pay for it. Because we've done it over the years where we paid for the classes first, or the district has, and then we've had to pay the district back before they changed that, you know, M.A.S.D. was...
And we've done that for pretty much on every employee. If we have employees that go to the AP training over the summer, we are paying for that training.
So you're registering them?
We would register.
Oh, okay.
So I don't see reimbursement as you have to pay it and then we... I see that there's a, we're going to use dollars to send you and whoever else want to do it for that training and the public knows.
Okay, so we're back to, I'm looking for...
Wait, wait, I got one more question.
Oops, sorry.
Wait, because you have the sample motion here and it says choose one or more. So I'm going to make the motion, and so I'm going to make the motion for everything? Or does that, is that the person who's making the motion's decision? Or should it not be in red, we're putting all those in there?
Well, the meals is already included, so I think you would not, you would not say meals. I think everything else you would have to say, right?
Last year, meals and mileage were not submitted for reimbursement by board member. The registration and the hotel...
Well, we just didn't, but we could have.
You could have, and those are the categories that we reimburse any employee in the order.
Even the meals.
There's a meal allowance, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's like $9 for breakfast, $10 for lunch.
They provide us food, yeah, I think dinner was on. Okay, so that's my question though. You've got a sample resolution here, so if it's not, huh? If it's not, if it's not meals, then we're not going to say meals.
No, we said we do say meals. There is, you said there is a...
That's one of the categories we would reimburse.
So it's your option.
Right, I think we should say it, but we should say all four in motion.
Okay, all right.
And whether you turn in a receiver, that's your choice.
Correct.
If you did, then the allowable expenses are reimbursed.
Okay.
You ready?
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the registration, lodging, meals and mileage for board members Cunningham and Pizzito to attend the Michigan Association of School Board Conference, November 9th through the 12th, 2023, at the Lansing Center in Lansing, Michigan, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm really bummed I cannot go. It was really good, it was very informative, it was very awesome actually. It was really cool, it was nice timing with, you know, board members and stuff. But I was the first to go.
I'll just clarify, I believe it's Friday and Saturday, you're both going up on Friday.
Friday, yes.
And Friday, Friday is they going to the conference. So it's not the full day, but that is the conference with the full time period, so based on schedule.
Friday night class for me and then...
I might be able to make it to a Friday night class, but I'm just going to try. But I do have work, so I'll be up there now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business, the board will adjourn at 7:46.